For all of the victims of the mass shootings across our country. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Peniagua.
Here.
Counselor White.
Present.
Counselor Carney.
Here.
Counselor Hogan.
Here.
Counselor Majoke.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Here.
All present, Madam President.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March fifteenth meeting? Second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay. Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
The minutes from the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting are approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Now is the time and place for a public hearing. Would the clerk please read the short title?
Yes, Madam President. This is to authorize the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two unimproved street program, Slurry Seal, on behalf of the Department of Public Works as detailed in Appendix A, costs thereof to be charged on to the premises fronting thereon, charged to proceeds from the sale of bonds. Total cost not to exceed one million, one hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone here in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone here in opposition of this proposal? Is there anyone here in opposition of this proposal? Hearing none, this would be considered during our regular course of business. Thank you. Counselor Peniagua. Oh, I'm sorry. Go back. Are there any petitions?
No, Madam President.
Are there any committee reports?
Yes, Madam President. The DPW had a committee meeting on March twenty-third to discuss the municipal sidewalk program.
Thank you. Are there any more committee reports? Thank you. Are there any communications?
Not today, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Peniagua.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I have unfinished business, under unfinished business, item A, and it's a local law of the city of Syracuse to grant permanent easement to Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation on Henninger High School property. And this item is ready, I unearthed for its adoption.
Thank you. Item nine A. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item nine A is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. I have item ten. I would like to introduce it and urge your adoption. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green. Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item ten is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Bay.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item number eleven. I'd like to introduce and urge this adoption.
Thank you. At item number eleven. Are there any objections? Discussion?
Yes, President. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Bay.
I, I, I just wanted to state, Madam President, that, you know, a- as our usual process, when there's a request from the legislature to the administration, it's done in the form of a resolution. I think this kind of project has value long term. Certainly has aesthetic and economic value. And we, we just hope that the administration sees the value in this kind of project. You know, it's a subject piece for, for years to come. And I would want to just reiterate, I think, what, what I think is awesome about the celebration of Manny Breland and his accomplishments, you know, one of our own. And, and again, hope that my counselors are voting in support of and that the administration see the value. I personally would like to see CIDA as a resource for this kind of project. But again, to my counselors, I hope that you vote affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bay. Counselor Hogan?
Yes, thank you, President Hudson and my colleagues. I, I wanted to say something about this great proposal that my friend Frank Balfettano has put forth. This project that the common council will vote on today, urging the mayor to get a, set aside seventy-five thousand dollars for this to support a mural that depicts four true Syracuse heroes. These people are basketball stars, but they were stars in life too. The resolution is sponsored by all of us. And why? And my opinion is it's simple. We need it. After the year the city and the country has gone through with this pandemic that has killed a half a million Americans, the murder of George Floyd that exposed the ugly racial divisions in this country, the marches that followed and the election. We need something to cheer for. And the public art presented by this proposed mural depicting four people whose lives and careers were nurtured in this town and became, became inextricably part of its history and fits the bill. Daugherty, Earl, Brianna, and Manny overcame bigotry, prejudices, and achieved. They exemplified to me what this town and its people have always been about. Resilience, character, and toughness. I look at it as a testament to our past and something will represent a solemn promise to our future. I look forward to voting for this resolution and the mayor agreeing to put for aside the funds for it. Thank you.
Any more conversation? Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Item eleven, Counselor Bay. Counselor Green.
Yes.
I couldn't hear you, Counsel Green, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item eleven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Bay.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item number twelve. I'd like to introduce it and urge this adoption.
Thank you. Item twelve. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twelve is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Madam President, I have items thirteen through seventeen. Item thirteen will be held and items fourteen through seventeen will be introduced.
Thank you. Item thirteen is being held. Item fourteen. Are there any objections? Discussion?
Discussion, Madam President.
Alrighty.
Thank you. The economic development strategy for Syracuse has been that if any entity wants to invest in Syracuse, the city needs to give them whatever they want. That if someone says they're going to create jobs, they should be excused from all the responsibilities to the community. I understand that's the way we've always done things, but this trickle-down philosophy hasn't worked. This entire negotiation has been a frustrating reminder of how deeply rooted this philosophy is in Syracuse. Tech Garden was never going to move. There's no location that would give Center State a sweeter deal. And the notion that they would walk away from fifteen million dollars in state taxpayer money was always a clear bluff. Providing jobs is great, but those jobs don't mean much if we can't fund our schools, hire enough code enforcement personnel, or fix our roads. To make Syracuse work for everyone in the community, the city needs to be able to provide basic services that residents can rely on. This discussion started with a simple request that if Center State earns more revenue at the Tech Garden than it spends, the remaining money should be split with the city. From there, we offered a counterproposal that Center State would be able to keep the space related to the Tech Garden programming without rent, but that the city be able to receive revenue from the unrelated event venue that was being built on the property. When that request was rejected, it was a clear, it was clear that the, the pseudo-legal arguments about nonprofits not being able to pay rent were not the real issue. The real issue is that Center State fundamentally believes that the taxpayers that own this facility should not be entitled to any revenue whatsoever. For as long as this mindset prevails, nothing will get better in Syracuse. It's time for the city to become an equal partner with the business community in central New York. And for that reason, I'm noting, voting no on this side. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Item fourteen. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
No.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
No.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item was adopted with seven in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. Item fifteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green. Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fifteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item sixteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item sixteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item seventeen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay. Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item seventeen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Peniagua.
Introducing item eighteen and urging for its adoption.
Thank you. Item eighteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item eighteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items nineteen through twenty-eight. I'd like to introduce all those items and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item nineteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green. Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item nineteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-one. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Sorry, yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-two. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Let me come off mute. Thank you. Item twenty-three. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-four. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-five. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Jamie.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Yes.
Was that a yes, Counselor? Okay. Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-six. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-seven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. That was twenty-eight, John?
Hold on a second. I believe so.
Yeah.
Yes, it was twenty-eight.
Alrighty. Thank you. Counselor Majoke.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. They are already, I am introducing them and urging for their adoption.
Thank you. Item twenty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty. Are there any objections? Discussion?
Discussion.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to state for the record that, you know, while I'm appreciative of recent efforts such as this that are designed to right the current wrong that's going on at the skyline, I think significant questions remain, and we need to hear testimony at some point from administration officials and others to find out how this was allowed to happen, why it was allowed to go on so long, and what the administration is going to do to ensure that situations like this do not rise again. And also, you know, we need to know what's going on concerning similar properties all over the city. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Yes, Madam President. Yes, go ahead, Porta. Sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to clarify for the record, Madam President, that our discussion earlier was certainly not about the lack of value, you know, and the need for security, but was for clarity on the legal instrument that was being discussed. Certainly, the urgency of the matter can't be understated, but urgency doesn't allow for derelict in the performance, us to be derelict in the performance of our duties as fiduciary agents. So I thought it necessary to clarify that, myself and Counselor Carney discussing agreed on as much about the importance of ensuring that the people in the building had adequate security and with clarity on the legal instrument despite the fact that there are certainly some questions still, I will be voting in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes, Madam President. I just want to also add to what the other counselors added as well to say that this message is also going out to all the community that what had unfolded at the Skyline apartment that alone, it's not a government failure alone, but it is also a communal failure. And that as a community, we needed to also take a part in our responsibility as well as the government is also taking their part. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Court, please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Item thirty. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-one. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items thirty-two through forty-seven. Item thirty-three will be held, and the rest of the items are ready. I would like to introduce them and urge their adoption.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's cute. Okay. Item thirty-two. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-three is being held with the public meeting being Thursday, April the eighth. Thirty-four. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Majoke, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-five. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-six. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-seven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-eight. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-eight is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item forty. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.